And good evening everybody. These are the candidates standing to become the next mayor of upper hut city council. But with every election, there's one thing stepping in their way and that's your vote.
Sorry, I'm just going to interrupt everybody because you're muted. We can't hear anything.
Well, Nick, why did you press the mute key? I said all this great words here and no one could hear me. So, so it's why we're muted. People have got lip reading. Um, yes, so these candidates here are vying to become the next mayor of the upper hut city council. Um, and you know, we're going to see how they're going to answer the questions and we'll introduce, as we're now going to introduce, not lip reading, but actually the real words, um, Paul, who's uh, going to be our question host and-
It's nice to be released from the council role. I much prefer being a free man.
I, I can understand that feeling very, very well. Um, do you still get people ringing up with their council problems though as a former councillor?
No.
Oh, thank goodness. A Wellington old boy, you're probably still sitting there kicking your rank for like, you know, 12 years after you leave. Okay. Uh, so let's kick off with our random audit list number and Blair, you get to go first on your one minute opening statement on why you should become the next mayor of upper hut.
Thank you. Thanks very much for coming. Kia ora kato, my name is Blair Griffiths and I'm standing for mayor of upper hut because I believe in keeping our city moving forward while protecting what makes it special. I've served on council for 12 years and I've chaired quite a few committees, worked alongside the residents and business and volunteer groups across our great city upper hut. I'm an independent voice and I'll put our community ahead of politics. I'm committed to making council more open, more accessible and more focused on what the people it serves. From infrastructure to the local businesses, protecting our green spaces, my priority is simple, keep putting upper hut first. Thank you. Vote Blair for mayor.
Thank you for that. Next up Angela, your one minutes, uh, opening statements on why you should be the next mayor of upper hut.
Kia ora kato. You know, when you're a kid and you fell off your push bike or you fell off your horse and your parents said to you, get back up again. Well, that's what I'm doing. I'm getting back up again. I ran for mayor at the last election and missed out by a short 1500 votes or so and I'm doing it again and I'm doing it again because I'm passionate about upper hut. I'm passionate about getting a team together and making a difference to our community for now and for the future. Kia ora.
Okay, next up we've got Emma on her one minute opening statement.
Thank you. Kia ora kato, I'm Emma Holdenis. I'm a first term city councillor and so I think I brought a fresh perspective this last term and that's what I'll bring as mayor. Fresh leadership, better outcomes for upper hut. I'm committed to, um, to, with the responsibility to set clear vision, to bring people together, to listen and to make sure that your council delivers on what matters to you. I have a background in leadership, governance and strategy, which means I know how to build relationships and lead through complexity. So this election is about the direction we take for the next three years and I'm ready to lead us there. Thank you.
And next up we've got Wayne, your one minute opening statement.
Thank you, Wayne Gaffey. Make no mistake that the, this election is the most important election that we've seen since the reforms in 1989. This, under the present system we're operating on, these elections, local government will have not seen so much change as we will in the next three years, particularly with, with central government looking at RMA reforms, looking at, at the, at so many changes, looking at regionalisation, looking at centralisation and every single one of them will affect you. The biggest discussion that will take place as part of this is the amalgamation talk. That will be on the table again and that again will be affecting us and I want to make sure that I'm leading upper hut through those difficult times.
Okay, Nick, and last Helen.
Kia ora, I'm Helen Swales and I'm standing for mayor because I believe upper hut deserves strong, transparent leadership that puts people first. I bring years of proven community service, business experience and a track record of getting things done. As mayor, I will focus on the basics, keeping rates fair, prioritising essential infrastructure and ensuring council spending delivers true value. I will open up council discussions, making so that residents are informed, included and genuinely heard. I'm a champion of local business growth, backing community initiatives and work with regional and central government and secure investment for our city's future. But upper hut is at a crossroads. We can either drift or we can be bold. Practical streets to strengthen our economy, protect our environment and build a thriving, connected community. I'm Helen Swales, your voice for action, your partner in progress and your advocate for a better upper hut, for the city together.
Okay, now let's get to the fun part where we get candidates get to answer the questions. Now with the good old theme of it's in the ballot, uh, we, now, oh, actually before we get to that, I do have apologies from Perry. Unfortunately she is unwell to attend and is also unwell to come remotely. We did look, ask if that could be an option, but that was not possible for tonight. So, uh, but hopefully Perry could sit down there and take some of these questions and answer them for them. But yes, yeah, get to the fun part because I thought, you know, get the, remember to do the apologies is the fun part. So each candidate here gets a pick and box number and when they get to pick a box number, they've got to answer the question in the box. Now, all candidates have been sent questions. Unfortunately, I'm sorry to the upper hut ones, so they don't only get 24 hours notice due to what happened on Saturday, but, uh, they've got some notice in it, uh, on what questions, what questions we're going to ask, but not what boxes they're going to be in. Now, every candidate gets given two button cards. So if they have a button, if they want to button with, with an answer to what someone else has got, they raise their button card and they wait till the end and then they get to put in their button answer. Each candidate gets two of them and if they have a curveball question they don't want to ask, they could use one of their defer cards and then can pass it on to another one of the candidates. Please do not defer them all to Perry, she's not here tonight. But that, but you're welcome, you could always cheekily do that, as I always sit there and say, you know, in some situations, I believe that, but that's for those candidates who choose not to respond. Um, so yes, um, let's kick it off. All the questions are nicely securedly tucked away that we don't know what's in what? Paul?
Yes.
Okay, uh, now-
It was done under police supervision.
Oh, that's good. So, so Officer Dibbles and, um, uh, who, what's the other TV character ones that used to be there's Officer Dibbles, Mr Plod, who, they were good, very good supervising? Yeah, and you might have Sergeant Wayne Judd from the Henderson Police Station of Outrageous Fortune might turn up at some point as well to double check. Uh, okay, let's kick off with Helen, what box number?
Uh, if I could have 28 please.
Could upper hut city council be more open with its information and meeting access? If so, how?
I think, um, we as a council have been known with a track record that we probably haven't been as transparent as the community would like. So making council information clear and easy for our community to make it accessible, ensuring that all our meetings and workshops are live streamed and archived online so it's easy for the community to access. Opening up important discussions with public unless there are any legal issues that stop us from doing so. Providing tools to let residents track decisions from start to finish, including how public feedback is being responded to. Creating more meaningful opportunities for residents to participate, speak and influence council decisions. Adopting a transparent default position, approaching, sharing information freely unless legally required would be what I would bring to the table.
Okay, Wayne, what box number would you like?
Two.
M, question M. What are your ideas for achieving more public participation in local government decisions?
Well, one of the things that, uh, will take, but will, will happen is that under my leadership is that the council has a large pool of, of correspondence with, with people who have corresponded with it and that part of a citizens panel, that, that information and feedback would go out to, to, to citizens and, and we'd get that feedback from, 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 from the citizens that way through a citizens panel. Uh, it's, it's done in other parts of the country, not everywhere, but, but certainly would be, it would give a, a much broader, uh, contact with, with citizens, particularly now that community newspapers have ceased. Uh, it is important that councils, uh, look for how they would engage with, with, um, with the, with the citizens now that, as I said, that community newspaper option is now not available.
Okay, Angela, oh, you want to do a button?
Just clarification, does the button have to be in addition to what the answer was previously or can it be a question?
You're button, if you're used to, you, you're going to use a button now, you'll be button, uh, buttoning and giving an additional answer to Wayne's question.
Okay.
You won't use it. All good. And now you get to choose a box number.
Um, tahi. Tahi, it's one.
Good.
What political party are you linked to?
None. And I don't think anybody in local government should be linked to any political party.
Okay, Blair, what box number?
We'll go for number 20 please, Paul.
What's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you intend on delivering on that?
That's a pretty big question. Not being the mayor yet, first thing would be to make sure that we've got a good solid team to lead us on into the next three years. Um, we've got some pretty big decisions coming up with the water entity that needs to get built, um, and make sure that we've got a good solid team around that. There's RMA reforms coming out like Wayne was saying earlier, there's a lot of decisions going to have. I think probably the next biggest thing would be how do we stop amalgamation? I don't want to be a little brother. Um, I've always been the biggest. Um, I don't really want to play little brother to all the rest of Wellington. Um, and I think that's going to be the biggest challenges we have.
Okay, Emma, what box number?
Uh, I have number six, thanks Paul.
What budget line item would you remove to help bring rates down in upper hut without disrupting basic services?
Thanks Wayne, I had this one earlier, um, and my answer hasn't changed. Um, in the long-term plan currently, there's a $9 million footbridge to the river, which I would assume everybody else would think at the moment is a nice to have, not a have to have. So that's the first thing I'd look at doing. Um, another item I'd look at pausing potentially is the community hub at 17.5 million.
Can I ask, where is this footbridge? Because I'd love to know where it is. So I have some context to it because, uh, I, some people might mistake it for the one carrying the water pipe in Silver Street.
Yeah, no, it's not that one. There is no actual footbridge at the moment. It's a line item in the long-term plan.
Oh, okay.
Currently built.
It, it, oh, okay, so it's-
But it's sitting there on the books.
Oh, okay, no interest. So it's nowhere to go yet?
It's mine.
Okay, uh, Wayne, you want a button?
Just to add to that, but that, that's not funded. It's a, it's not funded at all at the moment. Like in the long-term plan, there are a number of, of, if you like, issues that are addressed, uh, but certainly there's no funding for it and, and, and an item like that would be, if preceded, well, would only, would be debt funded and, but that's certainly not funded at the moment.
More buttons from Helen.
Um, following on, there are some items that are funded in the long-term plan and one is for 13.6 million dollars, which is a hydrotherapy pool, which is, we've already done a refurbish on it and I think the community would not like to see another 13 million spent on it. There's also a figure in there where we're going to re-scope the Ferguson Ward Street Wakati intersection. We've already said in the long-term plan that we will look at our traffic management or our transport issues along the table. I think that that would be something that we would re-scope because those were priced a number of years ago and it's really important that we're actually telling the community what those things really cost.
Now more buttons from Angela. God, this is nearly a hard hitting question. Blair's just got a button, then we call it that.
Well, as I'm not allowed to ask a question, I would like to state that some of the feedback from the community at the last long-term planned discussions were, um, around the exact things that these guys are talking about, who are current sitting councillors who agreed to include those things in the long-term plan. So if they're really that keen on not having them in the long-term plan, they would not have agreed to include them. And now if all of a sudden they decide not to, isn't that an interesting space to be?
Do you want to put a button Blair, just add to it? No? Okay, okay, good into the first round of our questions. So, uh, next up, Emma, you get to kick off for the next round. What box number?
Uh, 25.
Tell us what you think of local government or local democracy?
Um, local government or local democracy? I can do both. I think, um, the, the local in local government and democracy is the important bit. I think it works best, uh, when it's transparent, it's inclusive, focused on delivering results for you as the community. We really do need local voices and the government are very eager to do things to us a lot of the time and so we need to keep our local voices loud in the discussions that are being had. Uh, as Wayne said, there are going to be discussions about amalgamation and the government has already indicated this. We need to ensure that local voices and local democracy really comes through in this and I will be committed to doing that as mayor.
Wayne, what box number?
12.
What will you do to stop poor council expenditure, allocate resources to critical infrastructure and rein in huge increases?
Well, I mean, the first thing that will happen in, at the start of any retro regime is to, is to work through the finances of the, of the organisation and to look at what, what is important and what isn't. I mean, the number one for me is, is clearly, it's about what we've, what I've stood for since I've been in council is it's, it's basics, back to basics, making sure we're spending on, on infrastructure that is, that is really important. Uh, that is, that would be the number one priority and it's very clear that we'll be working under a, a, quite a different, um, regime with central government where the government is looking at, at, at obviously making sure that councils, they're talking about rate capping, which will have a huge impact on expenditure, uh, and, and they're also talking about making sure that, that, that councils, well, we've got the four wellbeing states being taken out of the local government act, which will have an impact, which was a positive thing, I think, from, from my point of view. And, but the main thing would be making sure that our expenditure is based on the core infrastructure as it stands at the moment over nearly 16% of our expenditure is based on, 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 on basic infrastructure and that will continue.
Okay. Uh, next up Angela, what box number?
Um, urua tikau marua, so that's 22. Because that's my birth date, Graham.
Question K. What are your ideas for helping people who don't have good internet access to be involved and have their say?
Um, great stuff. I had this question today. So there, one of the places, one of the groups of people that don't have good internet access is rural upper hut. Uh, and when I was on council, I pushed for a notice of motion to get some research carried out to find out how big of an issue that was. It's far bigger than you think, the amount of people in rural upper hut who don't have cellular coverage and don't have decent internet. In fact, they've only got copper lines, um, available. The other group that I know that, um, my former colleague here, Heather Newell, has been doing a lot of work with, a senior, in the senior range, senior net, you know, the whole access to internet, but there are other reasons why people do not have access to internet. It's interesting from a council point of view, all we can do is actually facilitate that. I would like to see digital infrastructure included or some facilitation of easier facilitations such as resource consents for putting in fibre. That's one. There's plenty others. Thank you.
Uh, Blair, what box number?
Number 11 please.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Number 11 please.
What council committees would you prefer to be on if elected?
Well, Paul, as we're standing for mayor, I think all of them. Yeah, and I think it's a bloody big job and, um, it'll keep me plenty busy.
The official term is ex officio.
And Helen, what box number?
Eight.
What is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Wow, there's, um, a strategy and a couple of points that when it comes to controversial, um, conflict and basically the very first thing is that you've got to actually keep an open mind with regards to any conflict that you've got. So you listen into a wide range of, um, issues or concerns that people might have, you make sure that the whole process is transparent and accountable. You also weigh up the long-term effects of whatever it is, the conflict that is there and then you communicate very, very clearly to the community what the outcome of the decision that you've made.
Okay, so we're off for another, a third round and we, so no, well Wayne, what box number?
16.
What do you see as the biggest challenges facing your community?
Biggest challenge as well is affordability. That's, uh, across the country, not just enough, it's an upper hut thing. I think some of the things that we'll be facing is next year will be obviously the amalgamation discussions. Uh, that's, that, again, that will be affecting our community. I think the other thing that, that affects the community is about how we plan for future growth within the, within, within our region. And with that, I mean, that's a positive thing, but with that, it does bring, bring, bring issues that we need to address. Uh, but more importantly, I think, um, the, the, the ability to make sure that council has discipline to make the right financial decisions. That's an issue for the community.
Okay, Angela, what box number?
Uh, tikau maru, that's 17.
Question V for Victor. What should council priorities be when making grants to the community?
Uh, well, uh, given that the four wellbeings have only just moved into the other parts of legislation, they've not been removed entirely. Uh, I think that the, um, council priorities when making grants to the community are anything that helps anybody in the community function. Unfortunately, there have been, um, there've been discussions about the cost of living crisis, uh, so there are more need in the community. I think the other thing that, um, that council needs to take care of and look at is, um, you know, the breadth of those that are applying for the fund because it is, the community grants fund is an application process, but it has to be for those projects that are going to help the most of the people or the most vulnerable.
Blair, what box number?
We're going to lucky through then, thanks Paul.
Upper hut city council doesn't have many places where tactical tiles are used, you know, on footpiles to assist users who are visually impaired to know where it's safe to cross the road and what type of crossing they are using. Is this a core function that upper hut city council should provide or is it a nice to have?
Thanks for the question, Paul. I actually read this one and thought a bit about it. I'm obviously not a user of these tactical, tactile tiles. Um, if there's a shortage of them in upper hut, I didn't know there was. I mean, it sounds terrible being on council and not knowing these sort of things. Um, if it is an issue that we need to bring it to the forefront, have a look whether it is or not a core function of our city council. Um, I don't believe it's a nice to have, it is a necessity for people that are limited in sight, um, and if they need it, we need to help supply it. Now, if it's not something that we need to pay for, that we need to advocate and get somebody else out to do it, that's what we should be doing. And if not, then, um, lead the way, show the people of upper hut, we do actually listen.
And the end of bonus stat, those who don't actually look where they're walking and they have, looking down at their phones, that, that tactical tiles are also just as useful for those users. So you- So you're a bit more than just what they're originally designed for.
Especially if you're walking around the Wellington waterfront.
Now, actually, that would be where you could actually sit down there and do some good. That probably is a lot better than what was being proposed on the table about that fence that costs $3,000 a metre. As a Wellington rate payer, I'm a little bit appalled. Helen, what box number?
Could I please have four, if it's still there?
Do you think the council should be involved in providing social housing? If so, how?
And the number is?
Sorry, X. Sam?
Oh, sorry. This is what happens when you have a venue emailing you about, are you still coming in the middle of a live show?
Does my time start now?
Yes, that's in charge of the timer, not me.
Social housing is a really interesting dilemma for any council up and down the country. And I believe that in the crisis that we have at the moment and all of the pressures where the community are demanding that we do critical infrastructure, that we focus on the not, you know, not the nice to haves, but the things that we need to focus on. That whilst I believe that social housing is important, I don't believe it's the role of council to do it. I believe the role of council to do and affect social housing is to be a conduit and to actually help and support any of those that are supporting that. I've seen a lot of councils where a lot bigger than us that have a bigger rate base that find themselves in a difficulty that they are unable to actually maintain or repair or keep them up to a good living standard. So yes, happy to facilitate and be the conduit with regard to and possibly even providing some council land for them. But other than that, I don't think it's the core business of council.
Okay, and Emma, what box number?
Number nine, please, Paul.
What part of the community or business sector does council need to work more closely with?
What letter?
Sorry, letter L.
L, sorry.
Earlier today, Angela said all of it. With unlimited resources, definitely. But I think local small business owners, community organisations and youth groups, the groups that are on the frontline of what's happening, they can provide really valuable insights. And I think we can explore this by using our digital resources better to target some of those groups and get better engagement.
Okay, and now let's re-randomise it and get another round of questions. And Angela, you get to go up first. What box number?
Emma, five.
Sorry, I'm looking forward to 25 questions getting answered right where we're going.
What are your priority areas for expenditure?
What box number?
E, sorry.
E for extra.
E for eco, according to the phonetic alphabet. It's eco for the phonetic alphabet.
It does. What are your priority areas for expenditure? Core business. And what's really interesting is how the government determines what core business is. So that's understanding because it is in the legislation, the core business includes libraries and pools. It includes the parks, but it includes infrastructure. So for me, it's actually driven by legislation, priority areas for expenditure. And I would need to know too that it's great for the economy and it's great for the people and it's great for our land.
And we have a button from Helen.
Thanks, Sam. So for me, the priorities are first of all, fix what's broken, maintain and renew our existing infrastructure before we try anything new. Future proofing, spend with long-term sustainability in mind whenever we put our hand in the pocket. Early engagement, which means that major spending priorities should be done in consultation with our community before we say, yes, we'll do it. This ties into I will ensure that our council has a focus on value for money in the services it delivers, demonstrating this through clear communications and community involvement.
Now, Helen, we'd now like a box number because that's just very good timing.
Okay. Can I please have, let's go for 21.
Oh, yes, the voting age in 1949 when my grandma first voted, just to put some reference. And she's still kicking live now at 97. Unfortunately, that's not a box number you can pick.
Question X. Who do you think is missing out on local government participation?
Wow. Who's missing out? Young people are missing out on feeling that they're not being heard and not being listened to. We have Maori and ethnic minorities in our community whose perspectives are sometimes ignored. We also have low-income earners and those most vulnerable in our community that who might lack time or resources or access to communicate to those councillors or council. People with disabilities, also physically facing disabilities that they can't reach or meet us in our council chamber. But then also those without reliable internet. As we have heard before, without internet, how do we actually reach them when we live stream our meetings? Thank you.
Okay. Blair, what box number?
What's behind number 24, please?
Twenty-five. Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Yep, thank you.
That was a ram scored last week.
Question F. How will you fit in council meetings with your other commitments?
I read this and I giggled. I am very overcommitted and I cannot fit in a council meeting. So I will uncommit myself. And my business is on the market, my land's on the market. I've already warned all the committees that I chair and all the charities that I help that I won't be available. If I get elected as mayor, I will be the mayor. That is it. There won't be any time for anything else other than my kids, my family. I may play rugby. But yeah, unfortunately, a lot of those other things will have to fall by the by. I think running for mayor in upper hut, it's a pretty big decision. I've made that decision twice. The first time I didn't really think about it very hard. I thought, well, it'd be a thing to do. Now it's a thing I want to do and it's a thing that I'm quite passionate about doing, willing to put everything else on hold to make sure that I'm available to be the best mayor that we can have in upper.
Okay, Emma, what box number?
I'll have eighteen, thanks, Paul.
Question A. Are council policies helping small businesses survive and grow?
Thank you. Some do, but we can always do better. We've had economic development funding, great support from our offices in terms of the economic development support that they give to small businesses and establish many businesses here in upper hut, which brings jobs into the economy. But we need to ensure that our economic strategy supports local owners, that it removes barriers and focuses our investment on where we can make the most difference. I think it's really important that small businesses have the support that they need and that we also, as a council, put our investment into a CBD that becomes a thriving place that then in turn helps those businesses.
And we've got a button from Wayne.
Actually, helping small businesses crucial for any community. And if you look at what's happened in upper hut over the last 10 years under my leadership, we have had a lot of business arrive in the area or expand. We had an economic stimulus package, which was very helpful for small business. Most of these people sitting on the stage voted against that. And that, I believe, was a mistake. But certainly from the point of view, from council's point of view, working with small business is a very important part of making sure we have a vibrant community and creating the opportunity for businesses to grow and give employment for people in our region.
And don't sit down too quick. Because you get the next box number.
Number 10.
What is your view on residential, commercial and industrial growth in the district? It's D.
Well, you put the three together and they're all very important. And from the point of view, if you look at what's predicted for our city, that future residential growth will continue to be a major part. And you only got to look recently at our, our economy grew from about 3.3% last year, which is right up there amongst the country. And our consenting is, our building is continuing to grow. And so our figures are, in fact, some of the, in the region, some of the councils are supporting our staff, helping with the number of consents. One of the issues we do have, not just here in upper hut, but across the region, is that there is a shortage of good industrial land. And that's something that unfortunately, I don't think the region is taking it seriously enough. But we will, under my leadership in upper hut, we'd be looking for particularly for more zoning for industrial growth, which is really important. But it's important for not only upper hut, but for the region. And one of the reasons, one of the, we've had industrial, commercial industrial growth in upper hut has been the fact that our land and the fact that stability and free from actually a lot of the climate issues, particularly tsunamis, et cetera. So it's, we've created an atmosphere for residential and commercial growth and it's something we'll continue.
Okay, and now we've got another new random order. And Emma, you get to go up first. What box number?
I'll have 27.
P, question P. Do you think upper hut city council should establish a dog park?
Yeah, I answered this one earlier, I took it off Tracy. She doesn't have dogs, I've got two of them. So I figured I may as well answer it. What I said was that there are private providers out there who are meeting some of this demand already. I think we need a joined-up approach to public spaces that serve diverse needs. That's it, we've got high dog ownership. So we also need to listen to the community and bring those people and those ideas into the conversation to have a bit of a look and to see. But at the moment, I think it's been, that need is being met.
Okay, Helen, what box number?
Yeah, let's go with that, Paul. Is that 14?
What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member?
And what letter?
Letter H, sorry.
That's all right. Only myself and Stacey are behind the eight ball on that.
Okay. What skills do I bring? As the deputy mayor, I've been the shadow of the mayor of this council, which means that I've had to have a strong leadership. I've had to be able to understand what it like is to pull a team together and support and mentor those that are around the table. So I've got proven governance experience and leadership. I've got community advocacy, which has taken me to international platforms in New York, Geneva and also in Paris. So I'm really, really comfortable in being an advocate and a voice both locally, nationally and internationally. I also am a strategic thinker. And when it comes to policymaking, I ensure that it actually delivers on the community that the policies are written for, that they're not just there ticking the box for what we do. But also as a proven leader, I know that we are all the skills are around the table. I've had to learn that during all my time as council. I'm the orchestra that knows where the strengths are and when to call them in.
And we have a button from Blair.
I thought I'd better use one.
That's right, we're still waiting for Emma, I don't think you've used any yet.
Sort of, you know, gives everybody a chance to sing their own song, talking about orchestras. Sitting on council for 12 years, I've sat and watched, I've done a lot of thinking, I've done a lot of learning. I've sat on and chaired every committee there is, sorry, sat or chaired every committee that there is, including Hut Shared Services in Hut Valley. My belief is that I bring youth, just enthusiasm, energy, strength. I can put a team together, I've been self-employed and employed a lot of people over my time. I've done that, I've done sitting on the council chamber. I think other than Wayne, I'm the only one standing for mayor. I'm not standing as a councillor, I believe I've done enough as a councillor. I look forward to seeing the result. And if that results in my favour, I'll bring every bit of my energy to the city and make it the best we can have it.
Okay, Emma's got a chuck at a button as well.
I may as well. For those who don't know me, I have served as an air force officer. I was a senior military officer. I used to lead teams and then I spent time as a leadership consultant. I've spent the past 10 years working with organisations to help them build their leadership development, to be able to help their leadership capability, to be able to build high-performing teams. I have worked most recently as a senior leader, an executive leader, for helping the team through the closure of flybyers programme. So I was the chief people officer at Loyalty, New Zealand. So I do know how to lead through complexity and through change, build consensus, deliver results. Thank you.
Okay, now, was it, back to the normal questions. Angela, what box number? I had to remember where the order was.
A, first letter in the alphabet, toru.
If a candidate is found to be breaking the campaign rules, do you believe the candidate should publicly own the mistake or issue? Or should it be able to be brushed under the rug and why?
And what letter is it?
Oh, it's Z.
Z. If it was down that end of the list, I didn't know which one.
I stand for transparency. And I think that this is actually a really interesting question because, no, if a candidate breaks the campaign rules, it's up to the electoral officer to take care of that. And I'm not sure how the electoral officer will handle it. That's not up to us to determine. I would be disappointed if people aren't accountable for their actions or the actions of their team. And so I would have to say today, my team were outputting billboards up. Now, if one of those billboards, because there are different rules for the billboards in different places and there's a maximum size and all that sort of thing, if one of my billboards is out of place, I would expect a telling off and I would be open about it being in the wrong place and open about my team going and moving it. Nothing should ever be swept under the rug when it's out of line. And but in saying that, I don't have any control over the electoral officer.
Okay, Wayne, what box number?
Number seven, thanks.
T. Sam, T. Should we have more cycle lanes in upper hut, Wayne?
Well, to me, at the start would be, from a private... Well, to me, at the start would be my prioritising spending. And that wouldn't be number one spend at the moment at all. The simple answer to that is going into the new year as a leader, that certainly would not be a priority.
Okay, Blair.
15, thanks, Paul.
Sorry, 15. That'd be the last one, isn't it?
Well, under the five one, but I'm sure we can come up with ways to sit there and get the other three box questions answered.
Question, it looks like one or I. What change should the local government, what should local government be doing about climate change, Blair?
There's about, I don't know how many different angles to take on this one. I mean, we've had quite a lot of conversations in city council over the last wee while about climate change. Obviously, we're in a better position than a lot of people around the effects of climate change. But we've also had conversations around how do we help the climate while not spending every cent that we possibly can on buying a new fleet of electric cars, for example. We've done things like put solar panels, solar power into our local business, into our core businesses. Roof of the pool, using UV light to help treat water, changing the way we heat, these sort of things. So I mean, these are the effects we can make as we make changes. I don't think reaching out and trying to spend more money on climate change effect will be good for our city at this time. But as it comes up, we can make changes as they're required.
Button from Emma.
I just wanted to add to that because I think too, it's about building in climate resiliency. I think we need to build that into our infrastructure, to it through our networks, our food and our energy networks. And there are some great initiatives that are already happening in the community that council has supported through the, through our sustainability grants. And so enabling those parts of the community who are already doing really good things and being able to help them to, to be able to combat climate change as well.
Okay, we've got nine minutes. We have three questions. Do candidates believe they could make them be answered in 30 seconds? And we can get for all three of them each. So each candidate gets 30 seconds on those three remaining box questions.
Could I, could I suggest that we use their buttons?
Well, you can, but if you're going to all get it, it's pointless using the buttons.
Helen and Wayne have used theirs.
So, yeah. So what boxes do we have there, Paul?
We've got 19, 23 and 24.
So for those at home, 19, 23 and 24. Let's see what's in box number 19, since your hand's kind of in it.
Question Y.
Why?
That's a pretty straightforward one. We could probably ignore this one. Uppahut City Council operates two council-controlled organisations. I mean, the sitting, all of these people have been round the council table. They shouldn't be you if they don't know those answers.
So, so let's sit there and see if you can say them in unison. All together, what are the two council-controlled organisations?
Farinaki, Baogatanga.
Maidstone Sports.
Maidstone Park.
Okay, sweet. Done, done. That's a good way of getting the answer out.
Question U. How should Uppahut work with the regional council to improve local transport?
So we'll kick off with Wayne and go down the line.
I mean, dealing with the regional council is always important because they are the, if you like, the controller of the, of the, of the, of the regional transport, of local transport, bus service, et cetera, and trains. And so it's part of it. Remember, one of the issues that does come up at times though, is across the region, is that when they, when we are reviewed, there's a review being done, I think, next year on services that's required. But what quite often happens, there's no more money. But what happens is with new routes added, sometimes the less perform routes are taken away. So it's really important. But it is important. It's something that we do, that we work with the regional council to make sure that, that the transport system operates. And we're part of a whole regional approach to that.
Okay, Emma.
How do we work with them? Well, through strong advocacy, understanding the data, getting good data and clear priorities. So we need to make the case for the improvements that will have the greatest benefit for the community. We've got a growing population, a good number who commute each day. We need to ensure that we've got reliable, safe public transport.
Angela.
How should Uppahut work with the regional council to improve local transport closer than it is currently?
Blair.
Most of the things have been said that I was thinking, other than encourage the regional rep to visit our council.
I probably support that as well as everything else that our mayoral candidates have said because I think it's really important. The biggest hole that we have when it comes to advocacy is when we open up a new subdivision. It always seems to take us years to get anything. We waited for Riverstone. We're waiting for Wallaceville. We need to actually make sure that when we sit at the regional transport committee, that when we put our projects up there as priorities, that our voice is heard and that we put a really strong case because at the moment, it's falling on deaf ears.
Now, as local knowledge, does a bus route run down Alexander Road? Okay, no, because that's Wallaceville, which is a brand new house in subdivision. So yeah, yeah, and it would kind of make some logic. Yeah. It was just like, I know which road that is. Yeah.
You could actually get the 110, alternate routes of the 110 to do that loop round.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, one question, yes.
They'll all say yes. Is rate money being spent responsibly?
And what letter is that?
B.
B. Start off with Helen.
This is going to be really debatable. For those of us that are sitting around the council table, we will say that, yes, we think that rate money is being spent responsibly. But then when you look at it and you look at the amount of money that we spend, you need to keep it in priority of how much gets spent on water, how much gets spent on road and transport. But with the funding that has gone away from our transport budget, it is huge because we've lost 51% of any of the projects that we had under transport. When you think of local water done well whilst we contain it for the next two years, then it just explodes when it takes out of our hands. So for us to just keep managing what we do and what we do well, yes, we need to go through it line by line and do a rates review.
I'm definitely with Helen saying that we give it a good go. We have a look at everything that we can possibly pull back. We went out and told the staff to look at, sorry, the CE to look at our, our business, our internal, to try and cut as much out of the local, out of our normal business as possible. We keep getting things pushed out to us by central government that are just costing a lot more money. If you look at just the insurance on your own home, insurance on city council is affected in a very similar way. And that's just one example. I'm sure everybody else will have another one.
Angela.
No. And the reason I say that is because through the last long-term plan consultation process, there was a huge submission number that we're talking about in the community that were talking about the answer to this question for them would be no. And they gave lots of solutions that weren't put in place by the current council. There was also a petition that was circulated and signed by, you know, a lot of people. And they also saying that the answer to this question is no. So if we're going to be representing the community and speaking for the community, then I have to say no is the answer to that question.
It's tricky because what, what we think of as being responsible, yes, I think for the most part, we, we feel that as councillors, we are being pretty responsible with that. There's a balance to strike between what the community wants to have happen and what we can realistically do with. This is where we have to put our governance lens on things. We have to work out what works with the strategic priorities, what works within the budget and what works for the community. And trying to balance all of those things and bring those discussions together is the role of the mayor and council. And I think we've had some pretty robust discussions around the table over the last year or so. And I think that ultimately, as Blair said, we're doing the best that we can with what we've got.
I think that'll be again a responsible task for the, for the new mayor and councillors to, to look at. They were pretty prioritised, but certainly from the point of view of what council faced over the last 18 or two years, was obviously with, with inflation, with cost of living and with many costs rising. The issue, the issue comes when council decides not to do something. People want the same rate of, level of service. They want the same things being done, but don't want anything cut. And that's, that's, that's where the tough decisions have to be made. And certainly for, you know, when, when we went through this last year, looking at, at spend and cutting, having to go through now. And the next, the next level would be looking at service cuts. And those are simple things like, say, do we close the library on certain days? Or do the hours come back? Those are the sort of things that eat in. And those are things that are not, not accepted by the community.
Okay, thank you for that, candidates, for going through that question and bringing it and making sure we exhaust all 28 questions in the question boxes. It's always very good when that happens. And we love it how we seem to be on a bit of a roll doing that. Okay, now just for a little bit of housekeeping, just before we get to our break. It's in the ballot. It's an independent nonprofit organisation. And we rely on small dollar donations to help bring these fantastic shows to life. And we do it on a much more sharing budget than our fellow counterparts at Television New Zealand or Discovery. Who, I'd say if they were here, you'd probably have 15 to 20 people in the room there just crew. Yeah. So I'm waiting for confirmation on the venue hire, but I believe the charge will be $500. The connection for our style and connection to broadcast to the world, which we're not using today, but we're still going to pay the fee, is $14 a day. Our restream hosting server is $31 a day. And we have a budget of $100 per vehicle per day. And we, we have a refreshments budget of $50. However, we're going to scrap the refreshment budget today because we had some people bringing some nice lovely sandwiches and scones. So we're, go, thank you for that, for bringing that in. It was a very nice surprise and I love it how Uppahut, you know, knows how to keep us fed. I think that's the best way to describe that. So if you would like to sit there and help out, you can donate into our bank account. You can always go on to our Eventbrite page and use the Koha without donation option. We also have a Give a Little page. And you can also, if you want to become a long-term supporter of It's in the Ballot and it's our sister show, The Auto Paper Podcast, you can always join our Patreon. And if you're one of our online viewers, please hit subscribe because there you can sit there and get the alerts of not just what's happening in your home community or It's in the Ballot, but what's happening in someone else's that you might know. And you need to ring, hey, have you watched It's in the Ballot? Your candidate has said this wrong and I think you should check it out. So, you know, these are the good things about these shows. You can find out all sorts of interesting things. I will take a break and we'll see you back in about 10 minutes' time for hard-hitting questions.
Oh shit, don't panic, bud. It's almost time to get back to the show. The candidates have stretched their legs, been partying, taking a break. There's still hard-hitting questions, closing statements and stuff you want to know. So grab those snacks, here are answers and prep for decisions you need to make. Oh, 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 oh. The candidates have stretched their legs. The candidates have stretched their legs, been partying, taking a break. Oh, 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 oh. There's still hard-hitting questions, closing statements and stuff you want to know. So grab those snacks you want to know. So grab those snacks, here are answers and prep for decisions you need to make. Oh, 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 oh.
The mute's taken off? Oh, sweet, sweet, sweet. So everybody, welcome back and now let's get you ready for hard-hitting questions. And you'll have to go to the computer. Because I need to fix that stream deck. Okay, now for hard-hitting questions here, we're going to be, was it, having three very interesting questions out there. Now, the first one is, you know, there's a lot of talk about amalgamation into a unitary authority, similar to Auckland Council. What are your views on? Now, just for those who are wondering at home, a unitary authority is a city or a district council that also is a regional council and performs both the city and district councils duties and the regional council duties. So just for some people to put some context into it, it's not necessarily a super city. Gisborne's also a unitary authority. But yes, all your talks about amalgamation into a unitary authority and Helen, you get to go first.
Thank you. So we've visited amalgamation a few years ago and our community was strong and proud with regard to, no, this is not something that we want to talk about. The biggest issue that we have with amalgamation is that our neighbours, Lower Hut, Wellington and Porirua in particular, have part of it as a referendum. So if they decide that amalgamation is where they want to go, it's certainly going to put pressure on us to actually look at it. My fear is that if we go to amalgamation, it would look something very much like the Greater Wellington Regional Council where we only have one vote. And how is that going to be representative of our community? It's about making sure that we have a voice and a strong voice in the decisions that are made for us, by us, for us, not by other people, for us. So I'm for doing shared services where we can look at where we can share and save money. So whether that's around transport, obviously we're looking at it and the hope is that that will happen with local water done well. But maybe that's yet to be seen as to whether it is going to be cost-effective and we are going to save money. But we are, and I am open to looking at doing things shared, but not amalgamation.
And just before we move on, put a point of clarification, Wellington isn't participating in that referendum. I know Dying Kelvert looked at it, but it never actually.
Got across the line?
No, it never crossed the line.
Thank goodness.
Only Lower Hut and.
And Porirua.
And Porirua have gone with it. And we, you know, we can guess why Lower Hut's following soon.
No.
Because, you know, Porirua's doing it, oh, well, we might as well do it because we have to do a Maori ward referendum. Because I remember there was talks about the extra 20 cents to do it.
Sam, that sounds biased.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, Emma.
Thanks. As we've said, amalgamation discussions are going to be a hot topic this term. We do need more shared services to create efficiencies around what we're doing. But I think that we need to have strong leadership to make sure that Upper Hut's interests are clearly represented in any discussion around amalgamation. So we need to be open about the conversation. We need to have the conversations with the community as early as we can so that people understand the options, the trade-offs and understand what's at stake. It is tricky because Upper Hut doesn't have some of the same issues as the other regions who have coastal areas. We have, we all have different issues and challenges. We just need to make sure that our community have an informed say before any decisions are made, but I'm open to leading the conversation.
Blair?
Thank you. Talk of amalgamation, I sort of made my point before that we don't want to be the smaller sibling. I've chaired Hut Valley Shared Services for the last three years, which is a shared role with one of my cohorts from Lower Hut. We've opened a conversation in that forum around their openness to have a shared forum, to have two separate entities that can work together and open up and have some decent conversation around how we could do that together. I've watched the Wellington different entities that have popped up out of the woodwork, led by mayors most of the time. And every time they sort of come along and they start with a hiss and a roar and they get wally moving, I think that fell over somewhere there. And it's a real struggle for these councils to manage to work together. I haven't been privy to those conversations, I haven't sat in those meetings. Maybe it would be different with different leadership in those meetings, I have no idea. But yeah, definitely an interesting time coming up. I'm not pro-amalgamation, but I would definitely keep the conversation open and alive for our community to tell us what they want. Last time they said hell no, this time they may say the same.
Okay, Wayne?
Well, if we're talking about, like you said, the question about into a unitary authority, then we're talking about amalgamation because Upper Hut would not be able to be a unitary authority on its own.
At least put a big dam at Silver Street.
And so the issue, look, from a community's point of view, it will be an issue. Whether it's driven by central government, it'll be interesting to see what their appetite for it is. But unless, otherwise, it certainly will be from the grounds of, okay, with the changes in what local government's going to be doing, with local water done well, RMA changes, centralisation of some aspects, regionalisation of others. The question will be, what is the best fit for Wellington and for our cities in the region for the next 30 years? Because what local government does over the next three years will change dramatically. And so as a, as a community, it's not a matter of saying we don't want it. The discussion will take place and we have to have that discussion. And, and, and again, we need to lead that discussion from the point of view because if central government suddenly decides they have an appetite for it, then it'll get done to us. But it's certainly something that's going to be in the next three years, like I said earlier on, a major part of really of what does local government do and what it's fit for purpose? And how do we best deliver local government services over the next 30 years?
And Angela?
Well, my answer hasn't changed much since this afternoon. My views on this are what the community's views are. And last time we looked at this, which was led by Sowera Gardner, Moi Moira Rangatira. He is with the previous national government before the Labor one. They were hell-bent on amalgamating Wellington and some other councils, it wasn't just us. And our community was emphatically no. And we drove them back on that, well, the local government commission. So I stand by that. What I also will stand by though is if the community wants to have that discussion, as others are saying, we might need to have that discussion because it might be driven by central government. And I have to tell you, I haven't met any central government that has, that takes kindly to local government. It's like we're a thorn in their side, so let's be one. Because amalgamating didn't work for Auckland Council and I don't think it'll work for us.
Gee, you're giving me remnants of the Port White Canada by-election because they actually brought up a lot about dissatisfaction of amalgamation. So says a lot.
I think people need to actually to go back and have a look at the discussions in Parliament when the Auckland Council, when that whole discussion was, that whole piece of legislation. I was lucky enough to do research for an MP at the time. And there was a lot of, I did a lot of research around de-amalgamation around the world because the German model was a very good one. And there are other models, Canada for example, many cities in Canada de-amalgamated. So, you know, there's a lot of information out there. We just need to go back and get it.
Okay, so now let's get time for hard-hitting question number two. Do you think you have any personal or professional relationships that could be conflict of interest while serving as a council member? Emma? Oh, as mayor, sorry. Yeah, the slides up there's changed, my card hasn't. That's what happens when you're being cheap on the labels.
The short answer is no. I don't have any personal or professional relationships. I've worked in governance long enough to know how important it is to be transparent around these things. And I would expect that any of the elected members around the table would hold that same standard.
Angela?
I don't. However, after this afternoon's questioning, I would say, I'm the chair of the Upper Hut Repair Cafe. I'm involved with the local food network. I'm a chair of a brand-new trust around sustainability and food. And I am looking for. around sustainability and food. And I am looking for funding, several of us are looking for funding for a project where we've been going into colleges, working with the youth on how they can use their voice, so a campaign and lobbying. So I guess, as, as a mayor, if those groups were to come to council for funding, I would probably, and, you know, there would have to be a declaration along the way. The really interesting thing about mayor is, the mayor is often asked to be and invited to be the patron of a lot of organisations. And I think that we have to understand whether there's actually a conflict of interest when you're a patron or not, because that's a really important community role.
It reminded me of my HCC days, where me and Jenny Rowan were the patron of 49 Squadron. Yeah. Okay, Helen?
At present, I don't believe that I have any conflict of interest. I think I've only got one on the current register at the moment. I absolutely agree with what Angela has said. If you are successful in becoming a mayor, then a lot of clubs just actually put you down as a patron. And possibly you may not even know that you're a patron. But you need to actually check these things out, because it's really, really important to get it right, right? Because it's around upholding high ethical standards and it's essential when you're serving the community to make sure that you do that. So I look forward to what central government are proposing, where they're looking at a new standing orders and conflict of interest. And it'll be interesting to see what that comes down like. And if it's standardised up and down through the country, then there should be no misrepresentation or misunderstanding of what that looks like. So I look forward to seeing what that looks like.
Okay, Blair?
It had to be me or Wayne. I think I'll have a conflict of interest around half of upper hut. I dare say that if I became mayor, I'd have half the contractors in the upper hut saying, oh, you can sort us out. You can be, you know, get us our contracts now. So I think there'd be a lot of upset people. I don't think that's how it works. I've been on all sorts of committees and clubs and things like that. And like I said, there would have to be resignations from my side. Again, the patron idea came up with Wayne having an issue with that recently. There'd need to be some pretty transparent papers coming out to make sure that those conflict of interests were voiced transparently, and to make sure that it didn't rear its head and make light of conversations or light of decisions that council had made. Thanks.
Wayne?
Yeah, there, there are a number of issues here. But the first one is that if you have a conflict of interest, particularly if, and I don't, from the point of view, if I have any contracts or financial dealings with council and a company or that, and everyone would have to declare that, that's quite different to looking at some of the other issues where I would suggest that any person standing for public office potentially, at some stage, may well have a conflict if one of the clubs or one of the organisations that deal with, it's not always decision making. Sometimes that there will be a conversation that's had at the council table dealing with that organisation. You may not be making a decision, but certainly from the point of view, is that's then a personal decision for that individual, whether they have a conflict or not. And then the other issue that arises, of course, is that, as Deputy Mayor Swales said, the government's looking at maybe unifying that sort of, those standing orders right across the country. But from the point of view of, of remuneration or any contract with council, I have no conflict whatsoever.
And I can certainly say, as myself here, as a moral conflict of interest, since Doin it's in the ballot, I have not actually stood for any political office positions, because I think it's inappropriate. Jack Tame, standing for the mayor of Auckland, while Jack Tame holding the debate on who should be the next mayor of Auckland is the best example. So yeah, that's, so that's something which I've seen as, it's seen, it's not legally a conflict of interest, but it's a moral conflict of interest. Yeah. And if, and if it feels morally wrong, it's, sometimes, yeah, it's wrong. Okay, now let's get hard hitting question number three. And this, I believe, is going to be the most important question for local body elections. What is your position on retaining the Ti O Poko et Tiiki Amaui Maori constituency for the Greater Wellington Regional Council? And why do you hold that position? Let's kick off with Angela.
I've learnt something about this question today, from you, Sam, thank you very much, that this is a vote, there is going to be a referendum for us as voters in upper hut for the Greater Wellington Regional Council's Maori ward. And I, and there isn't a vote for a candidate, because it's unopposed. But we will get a referendum paper in our votes, in our inbox, right? So I don't know. I haven't seen the referendum question. And, you know, that's my personal thing, same as who I vote for at a national level. However, at upper hut, I'm disappointed that upper hut isn't having a referendum. I'm disappointed that the council voted for Maori wards and then rescinded that vote, but didn't actually give the community another chance to have a discussion around that, because it's actually really important to have a partnership with all of the people that live in upper hut, including Maori.
Helen?
I understand and appreciate that this referendum is there, but I have done some homework in due diligence and I will be supporting this. And the reason why I will be supporting this co-papa is that a lot of tikkanga with regard to iwi, mana fenua, actually lie in this space around regional council. It's about papatu and nuku, it's about the why, it's about all of those things that are held for intergenerational and those that are coming behind us. So I think it's really important that they have a Maori voice around the table. And if I can say that, while some people might be disappointed that we didn't go with Maori people sitting in our ward up here in upper hut, we do have memorandums of understanding with iwi, that we do have conversations with them. They are at the table. It is their representative that comes and talks to us. And I'm hoping that that will just grow from that. I believe those conversations are ongoing all the time.
Okay, Emma?
Thanks. I mean, this particular question is, is a question for the voters, rather than the upper hut city council. But that said, I do support fair representation, which is why I voted for Maori ward for upper hut the first time round. And again, the second time to send it to the referendum, because I felt it was really important that we heard all the voices around that. So I do support fair representation, strong partnerships with mana fenua, which we do have here in upper hut through, through other means. But the key is making sure whatever model we have works, helps us work together and strengthens our ability to get the best comes, outcomes for upper hut, which arguably is having the most voices in the mix.
Okay, Blair?
It's going to be me or Wayne again, won't it? So this actually says, what's your position? And people who have sat around and watched me vote probably know my position. We need voices. We need the people on, on our committees, making sure that everybody's heard. Like Emma said, it's all about representation, making sure that representation is there. Angela's also said that that'll come up to our voting, our decision will, you know, come as a personal decision. And when I get that question, I'll vote on that question. I think that, you know, regional council will have to lead with their ideas around it. I want to see representation of all people in upper hut around our tables. And getting a Maori ward somewhere around is a great, great idea. We've had memorandums of understanding that we voted on. We've got those underway. We support all of our iwi. When they come to our tables, they speak to us as regularly as we can possibly get them there. So keep up. Thank you.
And Wayne?
Well, it's very clear. I mean, the regional council are holding the referendum. And so it's not for, for, for any mayor or candidate to determine or to tell people what they should be doing. And this is what the, the region, the community in upper hut will determine when they're having the referendum. So the people of the city, the people of the region will determine whether that's the case or not.
And just for the voters out there, as a bit of a reminder, you will be receiving referendum voting papers with your, referendum papers with your voting papers. Please make sure you fill it out. Please do not discard it thinking it's irrelevant, because upper hut city council chose not to do it. If we sit there and look at here, both myself and Nick are actually going to have to vote two Maori ward referendums, because I live in Wellington City Council, he lives in Kapiti Coast District Council. So we have two Maori ward referendums to vote for, not one, because both our councils was a whole Maori, was a whole, holding Maori ward elections this year. But please, you know, go out there and please take your time in doing your research and making an informed decision on how you cast your tick in the referendum paper. So that's my two cents worth. And please don't get referendum paper shock when you open your voting papers and you discover a referendum paper in there that you weren't expecting. So we get to the next part, closing statements. And Emma, you get to go up first for your one minute on why the upper hut voters should give you their tick.
Thanks, Sam. Over the next term, upper hut's going to face some really big decisions on water, on growth, on spending and on our place in the region. So we need a mayor who can focus on the big picture, setting priorities, making smart calls, making sure that the council works as a team for our community. It's not a matter of doing what we've always done. Things have changed. Our social, our landscape has changed, the financial landscape has certainly changed. We need to ensure that we're making the right decisions, and we do that by listening to the community. So I'm here to lead with integrity, to listen, to ask the right questions, make sure the community's voice is at the table when decisions are made, because we only get the best outcomes when people feel part of the process. I'll bring leadership, relationships and teamwork to deliver better outcomes for upper hut.
Okay, Wayne?
Well, like I said, this is the most important election that we faced in, in local government and the major changes that are going to occur. And they will be major, like I've said. So upper hut, what I've given upper hut has been a proven trusted leader. And we need someone like that who can navigate through these issues, because these issues will affect every single one of us in this city. I've proven that I can do that. And I've given upper hut a regional and national voice, which is really important when we're going through these changes. It's not a time for unproven leadership. It's not a time for people with wish lists of things that they want to do. It's a time for stable leadership, a leadership that's got vision and is proven. I'm a trusted leader and I'll continue to make sure upper hut thrives.
Okay. Next up, Angela?
So I'm standing because I've got back on my horse again. I'm standing because I spent nine weeks on bedrest to get this left leg straightened and the ankle fused. I spent three months all up in plaster and a moon boot. Sam was just saying before, it's really nice, Angela, to see you walking around without a moon boot. I've lived experience of disability. My mother is currently in dementia care. And I'm currently, I'm her welfare guardian and I'm working through the hospital system for her because she fell at the rest home and broke her hip the other day. I have lived experience of growing and producing food, of working with the youth, and I have lived experience of working with, across the political spectrum, writing policy for ministers, for, sorry, not ministers, for members of parliament. And I've been an advocate on the steps of parliament and I've written policy for, and worked with people across the spectrum for rural women New Zealand. I am passionate about upper hut and I'm passionate and the time has come for a new mayor of upper hut and I am that new mayor.
Okay, Blair?
So I'm going to read mine, because I wrote it and I thought it was quite important. Upper hut deserves a mayor who listens, acts and delivers. I bring experience, independence and a genuine passion for this community. I understand the challenges that we're facing. From growth pressures to the cost of living, I'm ready to work with all of you to find out the solutions that work for everyone in upper hut. That means getting some of the basics right, well maintained roads, reliable infrastructure and strong local services. While planning for the future that balances the progress and progress with care for our people and our environment. On election day, I'm asking you that you vote to keep putting upper hut first together. Thank you. Vote Blair for mayor.
And Helen?
Thank you. So I'm standing for mayor because upper hut deserves a strong and experienced and forward thinking leader. Our city is growing and with growth comes opportunity and challenge. I'll ensure we invest wisely in essential services and infrastructure and keep rates fair and make decisions openly with genuine community input. With the avalanche of changes from central government, I have been involved in many of those conversations and submitted as part of the team of council to central government to ensure that our community voice is heard. So I have firsthand knowledge of some of those things that are coming to us from central government at 160 miles an hour. You need a mayor that has been there, that understands, that is read and has been the voice regionally for our community. So when your voting papers arrive, choose me to be your mayor, who is ready to deliver for upper hut from day one. Vote Helen Swales, the change we need and the voice you deserve.
Thank you for that. And I have to be honest, there's not much I can say about first past the post. It's not like you can sit down there and explain the ins and outs like STV, because the sad news is, you only get one tick. So choose wisely when it comes to voting. Now, just before we go, we're going to ask a bit of a fluff question. If you come, if you end up magically at Wellington Hospital, now that's a little bit more cheaper down this end of the country than where we were last night of building. And this is Saturday, you get over to Newtown Market, because the hospital's coffee ain't there. If you haven't seen me as a barista, to get your coffee, if you're going to order a coffee from me, what would it be? Let's kick off with Helen.
Okay, it would be a coconut milk flat white and you better not burn the milk.
Someone's talking my language. I mean, I prefer the coconut moccas, but I, I've got, coconut milk is very nice.
I like my coffee like I behave, black and strong. Americano at a minimum.
Really?
That's not a coffee.
So, so could we do your quad shot long black?
If you want to see me hyperactive, yeah. Thanks.
Angela?
I'll have a coconut milk hot chocolate with a dash of butterscotch.
Emma?
Double shot, black, white.
Wayne?
Well, I don't want to disappoint you, but I'm not a great coffee drinker. If it was, if I was to have one, I'd have a mocha.
A mocha.
Is that because of the chocolate?
Takes the bitterness of the coffee off, but still gives the caffeine hit. Okay. Well, thank you candidates for participating and putting your feet on the It's in the Ballot fire. And I think it's, actually, looking at it here, for the second time round, considering this is the second election that we're covering upper hut. So really pleased to sit there and do it. I'd also like to thank the audience for coming in, both in studio and online, and the active conversations that have been happening online. They've been, I've been watching little bits in there about, you know, which candidates they like and, or different things that are going in there. And some new people who are in the community, who are probably not used to our loyal followers. I'd also like to thank Kiwiske for the moderation of doing the show tonight, as you have done with many of the shows on there, and letting people know what's happening for It's in the Ballot. And also like to thank team of Nick and Logan, who are both here in studio for making today work, and for Stacey, who's coming in remotely doing all of, was it her parts as being the producer of the show. And I'm trying to think, who else do I mean to thank, Nick? Where have I finished on the list? Yep, candidates. Okay, okay, next, yes, I've made enough thank yous. Okay, yep. So we will, the catering, oh, yes, yes. Thank you for coming with the scones and the sandwiches. It was a nice surprise, a nice surprise. And we're very happy with it.
Sam, before you go, I just think that upper hut want to thank you for bringing the candidates to them through through this amazing platform that you've got, that you do it on a shoestring budget. And I only hope that people put their hand in their pocket and donate to your Give a Little page or the other avenues that you've got. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And just like to say, also for Helen, thank you for lending us your trailer. It does take the edge off space. Even that was a little bit fun going up transmission gully last night and only could do 50 kilometres an hour, which if I, if the trailer didn't have to come to upper heart, I would have gone through Pukera Bay. So that was something, it was quite a, quite an interesting experience trying to drive last night because the car's temperature gauge couldn't get anywhere near warm. A bit like the choke that just never came off. Yeah, which, which seems a bit old fashioned now because how many, how many cars have chokes? Well, no, they all have chokes, but they're all automatics, not manual ones. Okay, we'll see you all back tomorrow for our inaugural community board show where Nick will be taking off his baby on how to entice the Featherstone Community Board when we head over the Rumutakas tomorrow. So you can join us at 3pm for that. See you then, have a good evening.